Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular city council meeting of March 8th, 2021. Madam Clerk, the role, please. You're muted, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bixson?
Here.
Salvia?
Yeah.
Albrecht?
Here.
Bavacqua?
Here.
Harrison?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Sage?
Here.
Thank you. Next, we're going to have Councilmember Albrecht lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Albrecht.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Madam Clerk. Welcome, everybody, to tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bixson?
Here.
Salvia?
Yeah.
Brian, can you?
Albrecht?
Here.
Bavacqua?
Here.
Thank you.
Harrison?
Fiona, I was about to say.
Peterson?
Just kidding. Welcome to tonight's meeting, everybody. Thank you for coming on this beautiful day in Rochester. The parks were full of people today, so I am hoping that summer is here, or at least spring is here. So first, we have public comments scheduled, non-scheduled. We have the update from Senator McMorro's office. And I know Senator McMorro is still on childcare leave, so we have Liz from the Senator's office. Welcome tonight and just looking for your report and also a comment on any legislation on, you know, the Open Meetings Act and where that is. So welcome, Liz.
Hi, thank you, guys, for letting me join tonight. I will do my best to do as well as Senator McMorro does. But a bit of an update from our office. Recently, there was a COVID-19 supplemental that passed both the Senate and the House, which included a variety of different funding aspects. One of the bills included 90.2 million for COVID-19 vaccine distribution, 150 million for direct care workers hazard pay, 150 million for UIA. And then also, the other part of the bill included a lot of the funding that Congress passed in December for our schools and our school districts, which included 136 million per pupil funding and 20 million for school mental health services, among many other things. And right now, I know there will probably be likely changes from the governor's administration. I know she's expressed some concern with certain aspects about MDHHS and their authority along with public health. So I know that's probably likely gonna, there's gonna be some changes somewhere. So that's kind of the update on the COVID-19 supplemental. It's moving through the process, but I don't know exactly what it'll be the final product at this moment, but I'm sure that will come in the next coming days. From our office, legislation-wise, these past few months, we've dropped our reintroduced a whole bunch of bills, one being our tampon tax bill, our license plate, bringing back the black and blue license plate, historical license plates, allowing for remote voting. And then we also introduced a bill within the the Hardworking Michiganers Recovery Plan, which would increase unemployment benefits. And that's an entire package. Our specifically dealt with independent contractors and different employment modifications during state of emergencies. Regarding the Virtual Meetings Act, I know it just got extended for allowing for Open Meetings Act virtually through March 31st. I reached out to the administration. I haven't heard back if they have any plans to extend past that. But I know both in the House and the Senate, there are, there is legislation. The Senate version introduced by Senator Schmidt. It's Bill 207. It was introduced four days ago, so I haven't seen any movement on that yet, but there is introduced legislation on both ends. And then I know there was another request to talk about mailing in bulk. And I have a research request out for that, but I don't have any answers specifically on that yet. So I know I talked pretty fast, but if there's any questions,
so those extending the Open Meeting Act, were those put forth by the majority or the minority?
Um, I know on, from ours, it was Senator Schmidt is from the majority party.
All right, so any questions from council to Liz? Councilmember Peterson?
Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you, Liz, for being here tonight. Question is, have we made any headway yet with the Secretary of State's office? Getting people to be able to have their license renewed sooner rather than later?
Yeah, well, we've done a lot of casework with that, so I don't have the answer for that right now, but I know that our office has been dealing with that a lot and communicating to the Secretary of State that we've run into a lot of struggles, specifically with our elder residents too, with trying to get their license renewed. So we've been working on a lot of cases of that. So we've been very vocal about that problem, but I will get you a better answer from them after this.
Okay, thank you. And one other follow-up, if I may, Mayor?
Yes.
So regarding the funding that you just spoke of that was going to the schools for the, that, I think that, from what I've just heard from a school district that was not going to be open, they were gonna stay, you know, on their hybrid of virtual and just some days' school. But they have found out that because they are not, they don't have at least 20 hours of school in a week, that they're not going to get funding. So the whole premise when they voted a month ago was to, they made the decision that it would be best to stay on the hybrid for safety purposes. And now they quickly turned around and sent an email out letting that everybody know that, well, now because we can get more money, we're going to go back to school.
Yeah, and that was one of the biggest concerns. Obviously, Senator McMorro didn't have the opportunity to vote on it because she's on childcare leave at the moment, but one of the biggest concerns that I know our office had and has vocalized to our constituents is that it takes away the choice to choose from school districts, and they know, school districts know what's best for their students. They know what's best for their families and their teachers. And tying these restrictions to that funding, in our opinion, just isn't the best. So I don't know what will change in the next couple of days with the governor, you know, it being, this supplemental being on her desk. So I'm watching it quite carefully and we'll update you guys, and I'm sure you guys will give the update as well, but I know it was a big, big concern for us that it strips those rights to choose between, from the school districts themselves.
Right. All right. Well, I thank you for looking into that. It's been a huge concern because now parents feel like their children weren't really, you know, aren't really being protected if they chose to protect them or not.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions? Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, I just wanted to follow up on Councilmember Peterson's remark there. I'm just, I guess I'm curious, which school district is that? Is that ours? Is that Rochester that we're referencing here?
Uh, there's various, there's various school districts that are doing so. They've also, there's some school.
Is it Rochester? Is it Rochester? Is it Rochester or no?
It's surrounding. I'm not gonna just name the school districts right now.
Okay, so it's not Rochester?
No, I said I'm not going to name school districts.
My question then being, is it impacting Rochester?
Oh, very well, maybe. A lot of things are impacting Rochester.
So how do we, so maybe I'll direct that to Senator McMorro's office. Is that an impact to Rochester School District?
I would have to look into that, because I know we have several different school districts within our district, so I don't know the specific of each school district, so I'd have to circle back with you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sage, it's always about the money, isn't it?
Absolutely.
Any further questions?
Well, thank you, Liz.
Thank you, Liz, and tell Senator McMorro we'll look forward to seeing her the next time.
Will do. All right, thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have a proclamation of the Rochester Poet Laureate from 2021 to 2023. And we have, and I'll just, I'd just like to read it. It's pretty brief. We're gonna have Bob Leidl is going to be our Rochester Poet Laureate. I see his family, looks like they're here as well, so welcome to the family and to you, Bob. And we were just talking before the meeting, Bob served five years on the City Council. So he knows all about City Council. But here it says, "To the people of Rochester, whereas Robert A. Leidl, an accomplished member of the Poetry Society of Michigan and the Rochester Poetry Society, whom he resided in our fair city since the 1970s," also owned a business, of course. "His creative works have been published in both newspapers and magazines as remarkable community efforts to preserve a cross-generational consciousness towards the poetic craft, and Rochester is a city of creative talents, and historic cities such as Rochester have greatly contributed to the enduring qualities of the Midwestern culture with writers, poets, intellectuals, and others. And poetry brightens the spirit and illuminates the minds of the community members by stating compelling ideas in powerful ways, especially probably important in these difficult times. And it is fitting to recognize Robert A. Leidl as widely considered a literary treasure than the city of Rochester. Now, therefore, I, Stuart Bixson, Mayor Rochester of Michigan, do proclaim Robert A. Leidl Rochester Poet Laureate." So congratulations, Bob, and well deserved. And, you know, I'd just like to thank you for all your community work around town. As someone who's been around, I've seen Bob at charity events and, you know, doing a lot for our community and with his business. So I appreciate that. And Bob, would you like to say a couple of words?
Well, Rochester's a very, very wonderful place to raise a family and to be involved with the, with the community. You know, playing baseball for the Grangers and, and being involved with the drugstore for the 42 years that I owned it. So many of the, of the customers, the Rochester citizens were, became my friends. So it's, it was, it's, it's a, just a wonderful place to write about. And I've written a few, a few young adult books that where Rochester was the center of attention. Of course, a lot of the poems that I've written have to do with my, my, my kids and their activities in Rochester, and all of them have been, you know, have contributed to my writing experience. So it's just been a joy to be a part of such a wonderful community.
Thank you. We look forward to your continuing work these next two years. And I will say, back in the day, we used to have the Rochester Hills and Rochester City Councils play the Grangers. And Bob always pitched for the Grangers, and we, the city councils, always lost terribly.
That wasn't my fault.
Well, of course, it was Rochester Hills's fault, right? But, but that was a lot of fun, and we appreciate it. And again, thank you, Bob, and thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate it.
Yeah, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Bob, and congratulations to your family there as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and speaking of good news, we have a Good Neighbor Award presentation. Is that, Mr. City Manager, is that you or is that Amanda?
That'll be me, actually.
Rachel? Welcome, Rachel. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. We have our Good Neighbor Award recipient on with us this evening. I'd like to share just a few words from her nomination. Pat Dobosensky is considered the cul-de-sac mom. She is kind, passionate, always there for you, and always has cookies, which is a great add-on. Pat does all the things you would hope a good neighbor would. She will water your plants, pick up your mail, and bring in your trash cans when you're out of town. She goes above and beyond good neighbor duties. She is a master gardener as well. She has a beautiful yard filled with native plants and a large vegetable garden, and she is never shy to share with her neighbors. She helps walk neighbors' dogs, loans books. She never complains when other neighbors may stay out late or play loud music. She is full of energy and her happiness is infectious. Pat is the ideal neighbor, the mom of the cul-de-sac. And she, uh, this nomination, the nominee spoke, or she said, rather, she speaks for everyone on their block when they say they love Pat. So congratulations to Pat Dobosensky.
Pat, congratulations, Pat.
Congratulations.
Pat, would you like to say hello? You gotta unmute.
Sure. I just want to say that we live in the wonderful community of Rochester, and our neighborhood is, is wonderful. All the people that are around us, they're ready to do anything for, for our family as well. So it's, it's a pleasure to be here, and we love Rochester. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and Rochester is happy to have you living here. So thank you so much for your being a great neighbor.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Next, on to the Rochester Hills Public Library 2020 report. Mr. City Manager?
Looking to see if our representative's here yet. Not seeing Ayanna.
I didn't see her either.
Yep, so maybe let's wait. Yeah, let's see if we can maybe do it later on in the meeting if she pops in.
Sounds good. Okay, next, move on to the approval of the minutes. We have the consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 8th, 2021, and consideration of the minutes of regular meeting of February 22nd, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson?
Or support.
Port by Councilmember Albrecht? I thought I heard somebody else as well.
That's fine. He can have it.
Okay, Councilmember Albrecht, discussion. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia? Uh-oh, did we lose Nancy?
You with us, Nancy? Thumbs up.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Yeah.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Yeah, Nancy, did you get back?
Yes.
There you go. Thank you, Nancy. Nancy, we'll just, we'll just use sign language the rest of the rest of the meeting. Okay. Next, we have an approval of the consent agenda. First is the 2021-22 salt procurement recommendation. And the second is request to spend $17,960 on Pink Creek Bridge maintenance. Councilmember Albrecht?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as outlined.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht?
Support.
Port by Councilmember Sage, discussion.
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Uh, yes, Mayor. I'd like to know, can we, do we know if Pink Creek Trailways reached out for any grant money regarding that bridge?
Mr. City Manager or Mr. Sage? Councilmember Sage?
I'm not aware that they reached out for any grant money. Have the other municipalities reached out for grant money? I know we, they have done so in the entire replacement of a bridge, but not for routine municipal maintenance.
Mr. City Manager?
Yep. No, they, they have not reached out. This is, again, our normal maintenance. And if it would have been within my $15,000 of authority, we wouldn't have it on this agenda item. However, when we got the prices back, this one is slightly over at $17,960, so it needs to go before council.
Uh, follow-up?
Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. So what was it? It was, how much was it before?
Our past maintenance has been between $12,000 to $15,000. And I put a, the last report, which was the 2018 report from our engineers in this past Friday's manager's report. And I'm expect, yeah, I'm expecting in our, the 2020 report to be coming during this month. So I'll have the, the more up-to-date numbers here for council for all the, the bridges, pedestrian and others shortly.
So I guess, what exactly are they doing for $17,000? Or that they do routinely?
Yep. If I, I actually asked our engineers, Aseel Putros is actually on. Aseel, I don't know if you want to?
Aseel, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So basically, the purpose of this project is to remove the sediments in the creek. So we have a lot of cobblestones along the channel. There is an existing 24-inch storm sewer that discharges the storm sewer from Second Street and Third Street into the creek. Since we have that much sediment, it's blocking half, more than half of the pipe. So when we have a heavy rain event, basically, the water is backing up into Second and Third. So we're trying to clear that up. We got Eagle approval to consider as an emergency maintenance to open up the mouth of the pipe. So when we have a heavy rain, we'll reduce the flooding that we're having at Second and Third.
Very good. Thank you.
Councilmember Bavacqua?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know why, but I'm always intrigued by the, the salt purchase and the salt usage. I was just wondering if we could dig into that just real briefly. Any idea, maybe, Mr. City Manager, how salt usage went this year in comparison to year prior? Seems to me like we had a pretty mild winter with most of the snow being in February. Did we have less usage? Was our, is our salt expenditure this year to replenish our, our salt reserves gonna be less than it was last year? Just whatever you can give me on that.
Yeah, and we also have Jeremy who can jump into. He's our Assistant Public Works Director. But in talking with, with Jeremy and also Jason, our superintendent, as this item was getting prepared, due to the more milder conditions, we were actually pretty much right on target for our salt. So our usage, when the temperature and the small snow, snow events occur, it's, it's good to actually have the salt out, and with the milder temperatures, it actually activates and actually reduces the ice. So we were pretty, pretty much right on target. I know right at the end, I think our last shipment was a little delayed. Jeremy, I don't know if there's anything that you want to add?
Yeah, so we were right on target. Sorry, I'm having the same difficulties as Nancy, so I'm gonna keep the camera off or I may not stay on, but we're right on. We usually, we allot for 1,750 tons, and we have a 30% under or overage, so that you have a actual gapping that you could use. We were at 1,850 this year, but that leaves us right now with a complete full barn also. So if we don't use any more this year, we'll start next year with a full barn, and we won't have to get an early delivery. So we, it seemed like a mild winter, but we had a lot of small snows where we had the salt instead of plow, and so it really did add up quite a bit. But we do have a full barn right now, and we're at 1,850 for the year.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Jeremy, while you're still there, I know with the revised DPW, we switched the direction of the opening for the salt barn. In your expert opinion, did that help us not lose salt to the elements as we had in the past?
The barn was completely dry all year. None of the rain, and we, we had quite a bit of rain this winter, kind of like rain-snow mix, because the temperatures, none of it got in the barn at all. The salt stayed nice and dry the whole year, and we were able to use the entire barn because none of it was damaged by water.
Thank you very much.
It's good to have dry salt.
It is, and also that, that's, you know, when it does get that moisture in there, it creates those big, large chunks. And so that, that causes difficulties with the machinery actually distributing the, you know, the, the salt. So it is good for us to actually keep it dry.
Absolutely. If you've never had to beat the chunks with a hammer or a salt spreader, it's very time-consuming.
Yeah, okay. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, as to old business, is the updated Riverfront Place Project Development Agreement. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, I'll actually kick this one off to our attorney, since he was finalizing the agreement with, with the developer. And I see that Mr. Millia is on as well, so if you don't mind, I'll, I'll punt this one over to the attorney, since he was doing the heavy lifting.
Mr. Jeff Attorney, welcome.
Yes, good evening, everybody. So at the, if you recall at the last meeting, the city council approved the Riverfront Place project, including the development agreement, pending clarification and working out of the detail on two areas in the development agreement, that being Sections E4 and 6. E4 dealt with the, the public benefit that the developer was offering to the city in order to get the special project approval. The city council wanted some clarification on what that money would be used for. That, if the city council recalls, that's, that's $75,000, and the idea was to put that for the Clinton River Watertown project. And speaking with the administration, the part of that project has already been completed through various projects. So how we propose to address the clarification on that is that we included that the, that the developer's $75,000 would be used to enhance completion of the Clinton River Watertown project. And we listed some possible uses, which are different components of the project, which may include the platform, stage area, rain gardens, rain chains, commission of a mural, amphitheater seating, et cetera. We, we felt that perhaps being a little bit more broad at this point, since it could be a number of years since this project, you know, it could be a couple of years, that could be tweaked as to what's already done at the project before this money would be used. So I think giving the administration a little bit of leeway as to what specifics. But we did specifically mention the Clinton Watertown project. And then Section 6 was that, that the developer, this, this is the traffic calming measure area. And so we made a little bit, we reflected what the city council discussed, which is that the developer will install and pay for the off-site traffic calming measures. And we included in this version two flashing speed limit signs on First Street, two stop signs and markings at the intersection of First Street and Castell, making that intersection a three-way intersection. So we believe that that now gives some definition to what those are. By way of note, we originally, there was original discussion of having the flashing speed limit signs be part of the $75,000 public benefit. After discussing it with a number of people, the developer has agreed to keep the entire $75,000 for the Clinton River Watertown project, and that they would be installing the flashing speed limit signs outside of that dollar amount. So that would be an additional give by the developer. I know that there was some question on that. And one thing that I did put in there, I believe it was Councilmember Sage, he wanted to make sure that when we're talking about the city property, the city roads, that the developer would need to repair and replace anything that was damaged. And so I added a new paragraph, subsection 8, that made it very clear. So there was no doubt of, you know, the, the developer had, has the requirement to repair and replace any portion of city property damaged during construction. And that's including roads, landscaping, sidewalks, sewer, and other infrastructure components. So those are the, the two areas, plus this new subsection 8, that we've enhanced. Otherwise, the agreement is in the same form that, that you looked at a couple of weeks ago. So I, the, I believe that the appropriate next step, if city council is satisfied, would be to approve the development agreement as it now stands and authorize the city manager to go ahead and execute this on behalf of the city. I know that Mr. Millia is here in case there's any final questions, but I believe that we've addressed the city council's concerns.
Very good. Council, Councilmember Bavacqua?
Yeah, thanks. I just we're having issues here. I don't know if I can speak without really setting this off. Are we okay?
That's better, yes.
Okay. Just as a cautionary tale, I was a bit frustrated to hear that the kind of the initial response from the developer was to try to move money from the the river project to pay for the, the traffic mitigation. And, you know, to me, the idea that a $40 million project would not immediately be trying to consider the, the safety of the residents in the area. Trying to consider the, the safety of the residents in the area and pay for traffic mitigation, um, is a bit concerning. I hope that, uh, we have folks at the administration and on council who are going to, uh, pay close attention. To how this project develops in the future, that there isn't sort of nickel and diming with, with, you know, every element, including materials. And that sort of thing in the future. So, um, I ask that, you know, folks, please be diligent, pay attention. Thanks.
Further comment, uh, Attorney Jeff Croft.
Yes, thank you. So let me, uh, not to, to defend the developer on, on that point, Mr. Bavakwa. But that was not a, an initial push by the developer to have that. Um, administration, when we were talking and recapping on this, uh, um, this item after the City Council meeting. The original draft was presented to the developer, uh, with that change in there. That's where the location was. And then they were agreeable to taking it out of that. So that was not a, I, I wouldn't categorize it as a, as a, uh, an attempt by the developer. To put that, um, out of the seventy-five thousand.
Well, I guess then, then maybe shame on the administration for that being an initial thought. Thanks.
Also Member Sage.
I'm gonna second Councilmember Bavakwa's, uh, comment there. If those type of changes are being made by administration without any guidance from council. Um, I would hope in the future, at least somebody runs that by someone on council, preferably the mayor. Um, but any council member will do, just so that we don't get into this situation again. Thank you.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Um, I just wanted to restate what I had, uh, uh, said at the last meeting, this not for the developer, more for Nick. Uh, and, and Blaine, which is, could we get a recap of what has been done at that project site? What will then remain? We, and I know, uh, uh, City Attorney Croft said it's gonna, might take a, a few years to do that. But I just want a, a better clear, it, it, I'm not, I, I support the agreement. I'm just, I want a clear understanding what's been done there. What still remains, maybe an estimate of the costs. We can, we can get some of it done beforehand, you know, and use the money, uh, as we do it. But, uh, just a clear expectation, because that's a beautiful piece of property that really could be a, be a, a beautiful area for the city right there by the river.
Blaine, was that it? This is Nick. Was, I gave it to you last week. Was that in the manager's report?
It was not. So I asked Nick, yeah, I was gonna say, I asked Nick to look into this and part of the challenge with this and to get specific dollar amounts. Is, uh, when Lawrence Tech University, uh, worked on this, it was over ten years ago. So some of the pricing that's actually part of the plan is over ten years old. So Nick, uh, provided to me a list of what has been done and what's not. And quite honestly, within the last three days, we, we haven't been able from Friday through today, been able to get updated pricing on some of those things. So as we go through those, we'll be able to have more up-to-date pricing. But if council would just like the list currently, we're happy to provide that. But the, the, the numbers that were provided ten years ago from Lawrence Tech are unfortunately, when we started to just check a few of them. Are, are way out of date.
Okay, I'm, I'm glad Nick did that and you can get it in the City Manager Report in the next several weeks. Or presented at a future council, um, council meeting, I'll be fine. Thank you.
Also Member Peterson.
Oh, yeah. So question, well, I, I'm not, um, liking number six at all. Uh, for the purpose of, I'd like to know why we are making it a three-way stop at First and Castell. That intersection is, I mean, First Street alone, you can park on, okay? And you're going to cause a lot of confusion there. Traffic is our, traffic already stops there when it's going to turn in either direction. So I don't know, did we even do a traffic study to see how fast people are going down the street? Before we go ahead and implement something like this? Because to me, that is, that's right at the intersection right there where it's not safe. To put all these stop signs and have that a three-way stop. I've lived on this side of town for thirty-five years. That's a big mistake.
Um, Mr. Police Chief, do you want to, Chief Shattonhill? Comment?
Sure, uh, in order to put the stop signs out there, we would have to, uh, come back to council and approve a traffic control order. So with that would include some, uh, measure of a traffic study to look at the, um, meet warrants. To put the stop sign up there. Uh, if we look at all the intersections, uh, along that stretch of road. That would be the most logical place, um, to put a stop sign. Based on the fact that you have that T intersection and, and the volume of traffic that comes off of Castell. Um, it really wouldn't necessarily be prudent or effective. Or even close to meeting warrants at any other, uh, location along that route.
Well, I understand that. However, I mean, I understand what you're saying because it doesn't, I mean, logically would make sense to do it there. But when you have parking on the street all along First Street, it doesn't. You're going to have a traffic jam. It's going to cause more problems there because people don't have a way to get around when you can actually park on the street. And then you're going to stop everybody there. They won't even be able to turn.
Well, parking, one, one thing to keep in mind is, is one of the things that we're trying to do is calm traffic. One of the easiest, less and, uh, least cost-effective ways to do that, um, is to allow parking. Parking is a, is a natural, uh, narrowing of the street and does calm traffic and can promote safety. Um, by slowing speeds down.
No, I understand that, but I want to know, have you, we, do we have a study that shows that there's even been speeding on First Street? Because I walk it all the time. I don't see people speeding on there. I see them speeding on University all the time.
Well, we, we do get, we do get frequent reports that it is. We have done traffic counts there. And the counts that we have done, uh, we mentioned this when we went through this, uh, a few weeks ago. Um, the traffic counts don't show that there is a particular speeding problem there, but there certainly is. Um, a perception or feeling, uh, that there is. And I'm, we're not certainly going to try to discount the, uh, feeling of the residents there that, uh, deal with the traffic there. It is high volume and sometimes that leads, uh, to the feeling of, of higher speed.
Yes, it is high volume. There's a school at the end of the street. So you have traffic that backs up there from that. Um, I think it's a mistake. I will not be approving this at all.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Chief Shattonhill, would the installation of the two, uh, flashing speed limit signs. Also require the traffic ordinance approval?
No, it would not. Just the issue until a stop sign would.
Thank you.
Um, do we have a motion, counsel?
Nope.
Mayor.
Um, Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. I really don't know if I'm having audio, but, uh, apparently I am.
It sounds good. Sounds very good.
Thank you. So based on the discussion and the revisions to the agreement. Um, I'd like to make a motion to authorize City Manager and City Clerk to execute the agreement as presented.
There's a motion, motion by the Mayor Protem, support by Councilmember Albrecht. Further discussion?
Yep. Will you guys check with, did you guys check with the school to make sure that they have people at that corner for, is it as a school crossing corner where they usually have a guard? For the safety of the children that walk to school?
That, I would imagine that's up to the school. I, I don't know.
When we make these sort of changes, uh, we do contact the school and their transportation, uh, department. So there's, uh, a point person and when we, we're making adjustments, those communications, because of bus routes and other things are communicated.
Buses do travel through there, but I would think that before we made a motion to approve something like this, we would actually have gotten a comment from the school. To make sure how, that they were not going to be concerned about the safety of the children that walk to school. Since everyone in downtown Rochester works, walks to school.
They have commented that they're always, uh, I guess concerned about the safety of the children. But we can specifically, um, you know, show them where the, uh, the three-way stop would be. And if it's a appropriate location to add a, a crossing guard or not.
All right, but don't you think that it would have been appropriate to do that ahead of time instead of after the fact?
I guess it depends on, if council, I mean, if council chooses not to move forward, then I would have been asking for something that, that, that didn't happen. So, I mean, if that's council's, uh, direction going forward, I'm happy always to, to run various scenarios by. Um, but typically what we've done in the past is if it's approved, then we'll communicate with the school district.
Yeah, but when it came to St. John Lutheran being a private school, we actually held them to a bunch of accountability questions as well. Regarding stuff like that and how the traffic was going to be. And now we're not doing it for one of our main public schools that has all under fifth grade and under children going to school every day on the street.
Well, I believe the difference there was this, this is the, the city entering into an agreement to do it. I think that one was the, the school in that particular instance was actually doing some, some modifications.
Further discussion?
Yes. Phone call.
Okay, uh, um, Brian, do we, is the six-five-one number?
Yes, hi, Jane Turner.
Okay, welcome, Ms. Turner.
Parkdale. I know why this thing was going through the Planning Commission. There was the subject brought up of bonds. To post bonds to make sure that they were delivering what they promised on time. What happened to that?
Those are, those are there.
Mm-hmm. I didn't, I, I didn't read the agreement word for word, but I didn't see anything in there requiring a bond.
Mr. City Manager.
Yep, uh, Jane, it's under, uh, the financial assurances is on page seven, uh, of the document or page thirty-seven of our agreement. Um, uh, or sorry, of the agenda packet. It's on page seven of the agreement and it continues on to page eight.
So what did the bonds end up being?
If you go through, it, it's e- equal to the, the renewing a letter of credit is equal to the amount of a hundred and ten percent. Of the cost of, uh, completing the site improvements.
And it's all, all three phases?
Yes.
So. Correct. Each, each phase has a bond?
Yes.
Yes, I think so. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, the, the bonds are not phase-specific. They're, they're each component of the project. Whether it's water systems or roads and parking lots, uh, or just general construction. There are various portions or, uh, statements in the agreement that provide for it. It's not, this is just for phase one. This is phase two. It's broken down by the work to be done, not by the specific phase.
Okay, and that's a hundred and ten percent of what?
The cost, the cost to perform the work.
I don't understand.
If the cost to complete a portion of the project is a million dollars, they would have to post a hundred and ten percent of that is, as security.
And when would that be paid? And there was something in there that they would pay it, the city's legal fees.
If there was an issue, if there was an issue. Right.
That's correct.
Okay, so we're not going to end up like we did on Walnut Street?
Um, yeah, you referring to the Lenora Project?
Uh, the dentist office.
Yeah.
Not a dentist office anymore.
Yeah, God willing.
Okay, and I didn't see anything in there about the eight years. Is that still a requirement?
If I may.
Uh, Mr. Attorney?
The, um, phasing, uh, that Ms. Turner is referring to is on page three of the agreement. Page thirty-three of the packet. Um, it refers to the various, uh, the three phases. And it goes through, um, that, that page is full of how the phasing works.
And is it specifically eight years to complete?
No, it doesn't say eight years. It, it breaks it down by phase, that phase one, uh, must be commenced within two years of the agreement.
Commence, but finished?
That, that's, that's part of the same paragraph, yes. It, it does refer to, um, if phase one needs to be completed within twenty-four months of the billing permit. For phase one.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mm, bye.
Thank you. Um, further discussion? Uh, Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, so Mayor, thank you. Um, are we still going to allow people to park on First Street then?
Uh, as of now, yes. Is that correct, uh, Mr. City Manager?
So I'd like to know how people are going to turn the corner when cars are parked there safely.
It, there's, just for with any stop sign, there is a certain distance that people can't park so that there is the, the visual.
Are you going to put no parking signs up there so we can aggravate the people a little more?
Uh, typically it's the, uh, the curb is actually painted to signify that there's not a parking. But if that, that, you know, parking, no parking signs are normally a, a later step in there if there's issues that people are parking up to a, a fire hydrant. A stop sign or other, uh, measures.
Right, but if we haven't ever had that there in thirty-five years, um, it's going to be a little hard for people to understand that. And just, uh, just checking, it's very bad legislation moving forward for this.
If I can just add, this is in, uh, other cases where we've installed stop signs in neighborhoods. Uh, we do, um, install the signs, uh, you know, after the traffic control order has been issued. We also, uh, add a warning period both for, uh, those that violate a sign that's new to the area. As well as any parking restrictions that come into place. There's an educational period thereafter to help, uh, ease with that problem as we go forward.
Understanding. Thank you for that. Um, the other thing there though is this, uh, the speeding issue is going down the hill into First Street. If there is anything, because you're going down a hill. It's not, I, I don't know. It's really disappointing tonight. Thank you. I'm not saying.
Councilmember, co- Councilmember Albrecht.
Want to follow up with the chief? Chief, isn't this very similar to what we did at Ludlow when we, uh, when we redid Ludlow? With the on-street parking?
Um, well, we li- we lined it that way and it, it's a good traffic calming. What was added there was a parking lane or line or a fog line, uh, which, uh, our residents there told us that it made. Uh, the, it felt that the traffic was calmer and speeds were lower because of it. That was a, the perception as we've, as we've shown by using the speed signs, it really isn't a change necessarily in the actual speed. But it does feel better for the residents there and, uh, so they're, they're more satisfied with the road today than they were yesterday.
Good.
I would just go back to our discussion, uh, and, and I, I want to thank, um, administration and, and Attorney Croft. To work with the developers. We're, we're trying to, we, we listened at the last City Council meeting to the residents of First Street. We wanted to put into this, uh, 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 agreement, traffic calming measures. And we've, we've put into section six that the developer will pay for those traffic calming measures. You as the chief of police will obviously oversee that with the traffic studies to make sure they're safe for the residents, safe for, uh, people walking. Including the, the students going to school. Uh, uh, so I'm, I just want to go back to what we asked the developer to do last meeting. We've gotten in terms of the traffic calming measures. So I, I want to stay on point to, uh, uh, what, uh, I, my motion was to approve the city. Or it was, I think it was, uh, Mayor Protem's motion to approve this, that we are. Administration has worked with the developer to put in, put in place changes we as City Council had asked for after the last meeting.
Very good. Uh, Councilmember Bavakwa.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, I guess now that this is kind of finally, after many years coming to, uh, its final conclusion. Just wanted to mention that, um, I am very pleased with the fact that we have a, uh, a development agreement in place. With some bonding, with some accountability, with oversight, um, just, just also like to mention that, that. Um, for, uh, for a great part of, uh, of the timeline of this project, that this was not in consideration. And, um, I'm happy with, I guess, my role in, uh, in trying to push this. And, and, uh, and the fact that, uh, council and, and Planning Commission. the fact that uh, council and and planning commission, um, we're open to the concept as well and and help move it forward. Um, so even though I won't be voting for it and I, and I'm not uh, pleased with the overall project as it is, I'm happy that we're doing as much as we can with it and that it's going to be approved, so, thank you.
Very good, and I, I'd just like to echo some of those thoughts and also again to say what Councilmember Albrecht said. Um, the residents on the street asked for some traffic calming, at least a lot of the letters and calls I got. I, I believe we've delivered some, I mean, it's never perfect, but we've delivered some. And um, you know, the developers in agreement, so I think this is um, exactly what we were looking for and, you know, going forward. Just for future developers and administration, yes, we don't like to see surprises, but I think this worked out well. Um, so I will say Madam Clerk the role, please.
Salvia, I'm sorry, Dixon?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Bavakwa?
No.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
Sage? Steve, are you there?
He's on mute. He's still on mute.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion passes, um.
Yes.
Good luck with the project.
Thank you, Mister Mayor and members of the uh, city council.
We have great expectations.
We look forward to updates as well.
Thank you, we look forward to working with uh, with your city and uh, look forward to this project, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on to a public hearing, is request to set up public hearing for Memorial Grove, All Abilities Park, the totlot grant project on March twenty second, two thousand twenty one, so this is to set the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson?
Support.
Support by the Mayor Protem Salvia, further discussion, the Mayor Protem.
Um, yes, so question, I really appreciated the logical process that was represented in in the memo in terms of the thought process, what has been discussed. Um, but what I didn't see there is what happens to the current totlot? If this were to go forward in the recommended location?
Marcy's been our primary person with Anthony, so I see Marcy on, I don't know if Anthony's on as well, I'm happy to chime in. Um, Marcy, do you want to walk through?
Welcome, Marcy.
Oh, thank you. Um, thank you Nancy for that good question. Initially, we planned to to retire the current totlot because in the small, that's in two sections, smaller children are on one side and larger children, older children are on the second side. Because we were having difficulty getting replacement parts for the smaller childrens particularly, that lot. Um, but what we've planned to do now is wait on any retirement of the facility, just replace the um, the broken equipment. Um, our foreman in the parks has looked into purchasing a slide and maybe some new swings for that to uh, fill in the gaps for that replacement equipment, and we would leave that totlot as it is currently. In the future, we would look at potentially retire, retiring at least one side of it and reprogramming it. Uh, maybe as a sand volleyball court or some, a different type of activity. But for right now, we are going to uh, replace it with as much um, available equipment as we can. And with the, the population that's visiting the parks, we think that it, there's definitely a need for or could be a, a good asset to the park to have three uh, playgrounds available for the population that's visiting. So we will do replacement uh, to the extent that we can, and we will um, not do extensive refurbishment of the existing totlot until uh, much later, a couple of years into the future, that will be uh, reprogrammed at that point in time, or a request to reprogram.
Okay, okay, thank you for clarifying that, I'm sure we'll have more discussion at the public hearing.
Thank you.
If I can also add to uh, the review and through our Parks Master Plan actually has that area being reviewed because of the floodplain location that it's in, so it is a problematic specific area, so um, again, as we go through that analysis, we do want to uh, just be cognizant that it is in the floodplain. So maybe more passive uh, kind of recreation in the future.
Further discussion? Madam Clerk the role, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Bavakwa?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you, next on to legislative deliberations, consideration of zoning ordinance amendments to section four oh four and section four oh six. Nonconforming uses. Uh, Mister City Manager?
This is one that our attorney Nvidia actually wrote, and I know we've had at least one question, and my understanding is it's uh, uh, to answer the one question that came in from council was, um, you know, how, how frequently do we think this is going to actually pop up? And it's very infrequently, and as Attorney Krot wrote, wrote his memo, um, it's something that uh, he and the, the planning commission, and I also a- agree should be considered uh, so that we can um, uh, basically clean up some of this language uh, that's in our current, current ordinance.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. So my only question, uh, and I've read through the revisions. So in section four oh four subsection three, the revised portion, it states further if such charge is permitted, did you mean change is permitted, or just want to make sure?
Yes, that, that looks to be a typo, thank you.
Uh, City Clerk O'Connor?
Um, and just to note that you're actually just um, considering scheduling a public hearing for this item as well, because it is a zoning ordinance amendment that you guys still have to have a public hearing on.
Okay, so are we looking to schedule the public hearing, Mister City Manager?
Yep, the, and this one actually would be in uh, for April.
Councilmember Bavakwa?
I'd like to make a motion to schedule a public hearing.
Motion by Councilmember Bavakwa?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Peterson, discussion. Madam Clerk the role, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Bavakwa?
Yes, sorry.
That's okay, Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
All right. Actually, we have a zoning ordinance amendment to article twenty one. Supplemental dis- district regulations. Section two one one six residential infield housing development standards to clarify overhand and projection standards and add standards to egress window wells and modify garage standards. Second reading and adoption.
Motion to approve as presented.
Most mentioned motion by Councilmember Sage, support by Councilmember Albrecht, discussion. Madam Clerk the role, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Bavakwa?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Nope.
Sage?
Yes.
All right, next on to reports from regular businesses, the twenty two, twenty year entry report. Is that our tree committee?
I think that is going to do that, I think.
It's, it's just in here in your packet for information, you can read, it's why your reported outlines everything that took place, I did run this by the tree committee. Um, so they saw it first, and uh, it's just there for your approval.
Okay. Next is a request to authorize pressure reducing valve project at Twenty Four Mile Road and Dequinder, Mister City Manager?
Yes, so uh, as the city has been uh, going through with the Great Lakes Water Authority and several projects, um, one of the areas that was identified is at uh, Dequinder and Parkdale, and there is a uh, what is listed as a pressure reducing valve. Um, this valve was actually uh, installed back in nineteen eighty seven. And um, as the city has gone through, there's uh, several components and uh, uh, this is a budgeted uh, expense for maintenance. Um, this would replace uh, two uh, different valves, a ten inch valve with a um, more modern ten inch valve, and then a six inch valve with a four inch. Um, I was well educated um, through the engineers and Gleewa as they explained to me the difference. Um, because I just thought, well logically, if we're doing a ten inch to a ten inch, why aren't we doing a six inch to a six inch? And they were able to, through formulas and flow ratios and everything, show me that the four inch for our capacity and what we're using, and since that area is built out um, along with the ten inch, if we ever needed it, um, is sufficient. And actually is at a lower cost to the city when we replace the six inch with the four inch. So uh, the information that is before you is the quote to replace um, um, the, the pressure uh, reducing valve, as well as the um, quote for the like electrical work and the installation. And that's for a not to exceed of sixty one thousand seven hundred and two dollars and ninety two cents.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor?
Uh, uh, Mayor Protem Salvia, you had a comment?
Yes, yeah, City Manager, question on the installation process. You know, anytime we're messing with the pressure in our system, we run a risk of losing pressure. So can you speak to the installation process, the backup plan? For this?
Yep.
Wayne, I'm here if you want me to speak.
Okay, I was gonna say, and Jer- and Jeremy's also here too, so um, prior to actually even investigating this, um, we had our water uh, foreman Cory along with Jeremy and our engineers from uh, DLC who assist the city with our water, actually go in um, and actually assess everything, and that's how we found out that this valve actually has not really been exercised. Which is actually a more common practice, and since I've been here, we've been uh, identified, we actually bought some equipment actually that does adjust and exercise these, because if we ever do have an issue, we want to be able to close these off so that we don't have to leak and lose thousands and thousands of gallons of water. Um, so um, what we've been able to do is actually ensure that at various points, and so this is with Shelby in this particular location, that we'd be able to shut off. That we'd be able to maintain the pressure, and that we also have an adequate, adequate backup. So we were able to go through all that process just to actually evaluate, where this actually with this uh, improvement will actually allow us to see some um, pressure gains on the eastern side of our system. Not huge, but three to five uh, PSI, um, um, once we've kind of gone through this. Also with the newer equipment, it'll be added into our SCADA system, so we'll have some more um, uh, measurement tools that will actually be giving us uh, more feedback when we're uh, measuring and looking at the system and evaluating the system, so. Um, backup measures are in place, we have uh, basically tested those to ensure that before any work goes through. And instead of just having Gleewa do this or or Shelby, this is a part of our system, and so um, Cory from our water department is going to be onsite during all of uh, these, these improvements and changes.
Good.
Oh, Jeremy, did I miss anything?
Uh, I'll have to ask their questions and I'll answer them, and then uh, if there's any more information, I'll gladly give more.
Also, do we have a second to the motion?
I'll, I'll support the motion, yes.
Okay, so second by Council, uh, Mayor Protem Salvia, Councilmember Bavakwa.
Yeah, I, I, I guess, uh, forgive me if I, if I've kind of missed something on this, but uh, just for clarification, I, I guess from uh, City Manager. The amount not to exceed sixty one seven oh two ninety two, um, is that, that's water and sewer funding, or does, is that, is that, it says there's money left in uh, in the, in the fiscal year. Is, is that water and sewer, or is that general, I'm, I'm sorry?
Nope, yep, this is out of the uh, water and sewer account.
Oh, okay, thank you.
It, it, it's a, it's a budgeted, we anticipated this, I think, being around sixty five thousand, so that's why there's money in the budget for this.
Exactly, I know, I know we can't spend water and sewer money elsewhere, but we can spend general fund in water and sewer, so I just want to make sure.
We could, but this is actually a water and sewer uh, expenditure that has been budgeted in the water and sewer account.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion, now Councilmember Albrecht.
I just wanted to thank Jeremy, um, you know, this was an old system since nineteen eighty seven. Instead of rebuilding it, you know, this additional cost is going to be thirty nine hundred dollars, we get a new system, we pick up some PSI. And then some of the other things that uh, uh, City Manager Wing mentioned, so uh, uh, thank you for, for uh, coordinating that, Jeremy, and uh, yeah, I'll, I'll support this too.
You're welcome, and I'd also like to give a shout out to Cory, he's a huge part of this.
He's a rock star.
And if I could also add, we, we are working and Jeremy and uh, Cory are working with our consultants as well on a few other things that all of these things along with connecting up with our fire department to improve, even if it is three to five PSI, so that we can continue to improve on the east side, because uh, we know with elevations, there's some challenges, um, so we are looking at everything from pumping stations to a few other improvements over the next couple of years that, uh, so this is just one of the things, uh, there's a few more in the pipe.
Literally.
Yep.
Literally. Um, further discussion, Madam Clerk the role, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Bavakwa?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Very good, and now the item C, request to replace the two thousand one fire department ambulance, we are going to push to the next meeting.
Okay.
Um, next we have their request to update the city's poverty exemption policy to comply with Public Act two fifty three, Mister City Manager.
Yeah, this is another one that Marcy actually uh, o- oversaw, um, there is a new uh, state law, Public Act two fifty three um, that uh, went into effect, and um, after some discussion, um, we brought this to the uh, Budget and Finance Committee, and if, if we get it approved now, it actually can uh, go into effect where, I believe it's one resident, Marcy.
One resident.
One resident is impacted, and so instead of making things more complicated for that one um, resident, um, this actually would uh, allow us to put this into place and not make it more cumbersome for that one individual. Marcy, I don't know if you want to highlight a, a few of the components that are outlined again on page eighty two of the packet, which uh, is Marcy's memo to me.
Sure, um, in late December, um, PA two fifty three of twenty twenty was passed, and then the State Tax Commission gave the, the municipalities the approved forms to use for that in, at the end of January. So there were some changes to how we go about um, providing an exemption for, for hardships and poverty to residents. Um, there were some uh, changes on who could grant the exemption, there are specific income levels that have to be worked into the procedure, it has to be available on the website. Um, and they have to have, it has to state an exemption rate, where it hasn't in the past, it was uh, more up to the municipalities to set their own percentage rate reduction. So what we did was we reached out to other communities via our city attorney, he was uh, able to um, provide some different examples of, of local uh, municipalities and, and their, how they're handling it, we crafted the city's procedures and policy. Put that together for council to, to see here tonight, and if if um, if it's agreeable with council, then we could work with the one resident that would um, would probably apply for this, she's reached out, out to us previously using this new format, then she, if she is uh, granted the exemption, could have her reduced rate on her summer and winter tax bill. Uh, if it, if we have to wait, we'll have to wait till the July Board of Review for that to be um, processed and reviewed for that particular resident, so it might cause a little concern when that person got a higher tax bill than they were anticipating, so we're hoping to make sure we're in compliance with the new law and that we're able to service our residents um, as quickly as we, as we can, so we would appreciate uh, your consideration to, to approve this revision to our policy.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Motion to approve the revision to the poverty exemption as outlined.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Peterson. Uh. Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you, I think that this is a very basic housekeeping measure that we're doing, so I'm appreciative that we're doing it in advance, so thank you, Marcy, for your work on that. And thank you for uh, walking our resident, if it's only one affected right now, thank you for taking the time to work with that resident individually, so that they feel comfortable with this change in advance too. We really appreciate that, and that's one of the values of living in a small town. so that they feel comfortable with this change in advance too. We really appreciate that. And that's one of the values of living in a small town, I think.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to clarify the motion, this is to uh approve a resolution granting partial exemption equal to fifty percent reduction in taxable value. Is that correct, Marcy?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
Thank you. Marcy, can you clarify the asset test that's in here? When I was reading through this and maybe I'm just misunderstanding how it's written, but in the motion, it talks about and it says the value of the home is not included in the asset test. But on page eight, it talks about, um, what is this? It's page eighty eight in the packet. It says it includes the value of the equity in the principal residence. So is the home included in the asset test or not?
The home, the actual principal resident should not be included in the asset test. So um so I can go back in and take a look at the actual section that you're talking about as far as the equity. We did merge a couple of different communities uh paperwork together. So if you don't mind, I can double check that. But uh, the equity or the actual P R E that they're applying for their exemption is not included in the asset.
And and that's what our resolution says. So I I I think you just need to review the wording there on the asset test under page eight, on page eight.
And number two, right?
Then. Yeah, it's one and two, one and two. Yep.
Gotcha. Thank you, Nancy. I appreciate that.
Further discussion, Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Bavakwa?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is request to approve the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty four state trunk line maintenance contract.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Manager.
Yeah, so uh every five years, there's a maintenance contract between the city and M dot uh that needs to be updated and authorized. Um, the attorney has reviewed the M dot contract and the appendixes. Um, unfortunately, with our last director, this uh somehow got missed. So going forward, we've worked with M dot to add the city's um the general city manager uh email so that we we won't miss these. Uh, uh, just going into uh one individual. Um, and we're working with M dot to actually get um uh authorization for the past years. Um, um, our work that we ended up doing um actually still reimbursed. Um, however, before they can move forward with our request for the back reimbursement, as well as our work for this current twenty through twenty twenty one, we do need an agreement in place. So that's the agreement that that's before you um before council that would go from twenty nineteen through twenty twenty four.
Good. Your motion?
No moves.
Thought maybe there wasn't support for that. Uh, Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by the Mayor Pro Tem. Discussion, uh, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I understand that we've established the redundancy now that we won't have this uh situation arise in the future. Um, does this also apply to other departments? I mean, have we created redundancy so that we do not have to uh endure this? With regards particularly with regards to contracts, specifically with the county and um.
We're we're hoping to, as we go through, I mean, quite honestly, there's some that I even I don't know that are maybe ten years or longer. As we're updating our records and making them electronic, we're actually adding uh an additional um person, if it's the the clerk uh through the document management component. Um, in the administrative office, we have now what's an electronic tickler, if you will, so that it will actually come up. So if it's every year that we're looking at this to expire and it's not till twenty twenty four, it will come up in uh, you know, uh, in September so that we have several months to get this before council. It's not a rush. We know we can work with, in this case, M dot. Um, in other cases, it's with the county, it might be with the road commission, it might be with somebody else. So we we are continuing to go through and do these. Um, this last agreement, quite honestly, was signed by the previous city manager. So, you know, it wasn't even on my radar as one that was set to expire. Um, when we reached out to M dot and actually asked for our reimbursement, that's when they let us know that um we didn't have a current agreement on file. So.
Great. So during that tickler process, we're going to also understand what current contracts that are on file that you don't potentially know about yet, uh but will be uh uh informed of should they expire, correct?
Yes, and we've so for the main ones, we've actually started in administration when I first got here to list all of our contracts. Um, because I want to make sure between five to seven years, we're doing our normal RFP process to look for and and go through all that sort of stuff that was started right uh at the end of uh the previous city manager. So not all these things got in there. I really wish this one would have because we wouldn't have missed. And I wouldn't have to be making a request for past reimbursement. Um, but uh some of these things are, you know, un- unknown. But when we do find them, that's why we're we asked and they've already agreed to add this redundancy. So it's not just going to one individual.
Very good. Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you. So um, well, uh, to me, I just um the contracts are something that should be top of mind and should be part of goals and objectives then. So um, in this case, because I see it as two thousand and nineteen, um, then it would have been sent prior to in two thousand and eighteen. So um, that would have been a couple of directors ago, quite frankly. Um, and I don't appreciate seeing something about a past one in here or placing blame on something that was done when they're no longer here. Thank you.
Um. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Bavakwa?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Very good. Um, before we get to this next agenda item, uh Leon, Mr. Connor, is the is the Ra Ra board person a mayoral appointment or a city council appointment?
It is a city council as a as a uh as a group.
Okay, so then do we have to have an appointment of this person as opposed to considering?
Nomination and uh and then confirmation at the next meeting.
Yeah, okay, so we would need then a nomination of this person. And now we, if we chose to, we could nominate that person tonight, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so do we have a nomination um?
I moved to make a nomination of Jill Soren, Jill Sorenson to the Ra Ra board position representing the city of Rochester.
Or some motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Sage.
Bavakwa.
I'm sorry, Bavakwa. Bavakwa said.
They just need to make the nomination tonight, so it's not really a motion and a support. You'll do that for confirmation at the next meeting.
Very good. And then Councilmember Albrecht, you had a comment?
Uh, that's, I was gonna ask uh City Clerk Leon O'Connor. So um she will not be able to participate in the Ra Ra board meeting till the following month.
Correct.
Correct.
Assuming her approval.
Assuming.
Yes, assuming approval.
But she could, she could still come to the meeting and as a visitor, I guess, the first.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yep, anyone's allowed to.
Correct. They're all public meetings, right? Um, next receive a report from the various boards and commissions, receive a report from the Planning Commission, uh Councilmember Bavakwa.
Yeah, we only had one item on the agenda and it was the uh motion you guys made earlier, the the uh revisions to amendments to four oh four and four oh six. So that was it.
Thank you. That was a very short meeting. Uh, I think we were out of there by seven twenty possibly. So that was uh very quick. Next to receive a report from the city's community house agreement subcommittee. Uh, was that the Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem?
I'll take it. I'll take it. So I have many hands with the community house, one being the the liaison on the board and the other um for council and the community's perspective, we formed this subcommittee uh to work on formalizing the partnership, um, the long-term partnership with the community house. And so while we are getting close to bringing before council a very exciting refresh of our community house. Um, one of the pieces that we want to have in place is a a twenty-year agreement, a long-term agreement that um includes a percentage of revenue back to the city. Um, that's an important component because while there are a lot of philanthropic, nonprofit uh community service elements of the community house, there also is a revenue piece. So that's part of the agreement. Um, and it's just really an intent to um put in writing that that beautiful partnership that we've had for so many years. So um council has had it in the manager's report to review. The facilities uh committee will be meeting and I believe this uh entire package should be coming to council um at the next uh city council meeting on the twenty second. Oh, and one other thing, I would encourage um all of council to do a walkthrough of the community house. Um, stop by and see Alan. I know I've spoken with all of you, but um it's always good to um stop in and see the facility. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. I look forward to that next meeting. Uh, next receive a report from the Budget and Finance Committee, uh Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. So we met on Friday morning and I think the biggest takeaway from the budgeting committee this week was that our SWOT analysis is coming up. And we really shifted the focus on our SWOT analysis this year uh to be very mindful how COVID has affected the budget, our budgeting process, and kind of how we are looking at things moving forward. So we want you to keep that in mind as we look at what the city's strengths and weaknesses are um because with the backdrop of of COVID, we think that that's really important. So please review and return your comments on that SWOT analysis to city administration by March twelfth. Um, and that's going to be one of the more important agenda items that we had. Um, a lot of what we also discussed was brought up uh during the meeting tonight. We'll have a discussion coming on um some DPW staffing options. There's a possibility for some reclassification of some staff and a memo is expected to go out on that um coming up with more detail unless blame or our city manager wanted to jump in on that now. Um, otherwise we can watch for that update.
This month in March.
Great. So we can expect that. And then we also covered the master fee schedule proposal. Uh, these were very standard updates that are made to reflect the increasing costs and they won't take effect until July. So those are the major things we covered if unless there's anything else uh that the budgeting committee members would like to jump in with.
You're looking for feedback on the SWOT uh uh revisions by the next meeting, correct? Or before then?
March twelfth uh to have back to administration. And then I believe that the discussion will be earlier, five forty-five. I think it's scheduled for the twenty second.
Correct. All right, thank you.
Another than to administration, I would say to Marcy. Marcy's the one that's putting together the SWOT component.
Very good. Um, next is on to new business referral miscellaneous of public, I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember Albrecht.
Did we ever get the uh person from the library to join in?
Uh, she is not um.
For the twenty twenty update?
Yeah, she has not been here yet.
Okay.
Yeah, we were, we were expecting her.
Let's reschedule her.
Yeah.
We will.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just, she had some internet problems or something.
She's four houses down. She probably is.
There you go. Maybe if you guys had gotten together and combined your internet power, you could have uh right onto new business referral miscellaneous. Is there a public comment? Um, Brian?
I am not seeing any.
I see we have Sarah King from the Planning Commission. Sarah, do you have any?
I am. I actually called in to listen to um comments about the Memorial Grove Park.
Hmm.
I was hoping to see um a little bit more information about what the actual plans were.
And then I guess that will be at the public hearing, uh, Mr. City Manager.
Yep. So in our next, the next packet, uh, which is on the twenty second now that council did it, uh, we'll have uh the plans, uh uh will be included in the packet as well as there would be discussion. Tonight was just setting the actual public hearing.
Great. And then just one other question, I guess. Um, there is a split end of the street. And I know there's some planned parking uh directly across from that. Has anybody been in touch with the school?
Then I'm not, Marcy, I don't know if we've reached out to the school. I know our engineers have walked the site and there were some conversations with some individuals, I think some neighbors. I don't know if the the actual school was one of the ones that was communicated. Marcy, do you know?
Hi, Sarah. Thank, good questions. Um, so we have not spoken directly with the school. We're hoping to have some communication. We wanted to see that the public hearing was set tonight. And then Anthony, um, the finance director and I were talking about that this afternoon. And our next stop is going to be talking with the school. We think it'll be a great asset for them. The other item is uh, there was some talk about parking on the street, but when we get the plans back um and available for showing to council, there has uh been some changes to that plan. And then an extension of the existing parking in the Hawback Field, we're planning just to bring it down, have that dedicated uh ADA compliant parking in that existing parking lot with the extension, so it would not disrupt or disturb the street. Um, but we think that the school, and and I can't speak for them because we haven't spoken to them directly, but I think the school would be very excited about the upcoming plans for that Grove All Abilities Park in that area. I think that would be a a great thing to have in that in that location.
Right, yeah, I'd just be interested to hear what that feedback is. And then, so your comment real quick on the parking, does that mean all the street parking that was originally indicated on the drawing, um, I Greg Street would be eliminated. It would just be um an extension from the baseball field parking?
That's the latest iteration, so that 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 street parking is not part of the current plan, that would, it's an extension of the existing Hawback Field parking lot. So yes, to your question.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Sure.
And Sarah, you're a consumer of tot lots, I think, aren't you?
I'm a consumer of tot lots. I live on Greg Street and I um send my children to NC three. So I'm an interested party.
Got all, got all three of them covered right there.
Hence why I'm here tonight.
All right.
But thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, any further, Brian? Nobody else?
No, I don't see any.
Okay, thank you. Okay, on to receipt of the check register and the city manager's update, Mr. City Manager.
All right, the check register is for February twenty fifth and then March fourth. Um, and then in the manager's report, just our manager's update, just wanted to highlight a few things. Uh, on the very back page is the first update from our our planners. So on page one fifty five, I just wanted to 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 note from our uh master plan, um, as we're starting um really to dive in with the subcommittees, I was on uh the first subcommittee on the housing um this past week. Um, um, so there's going to be continue every month at the end of the month, an update. This was the first one, so I did just want to note that. Um, wanted to provide provide an update with our Public Works Director search. Um, we did receive uh a little over a dozen, I'm going to say it was between twelve and fifteen um applications for the director position. We in ended up interviewing six candidates. And we've narrowed it down to two candidates that will be interviewing later on this week. Um, so we're moving along in that process. Um, as was noted, um, Public Works uh finance, HR and our uh and administration have been gathering uh information regarding um the structure of our Public Works um organization and operation. And uh later on this month, we'll we'll actually have uh an actual structural map showing kind of the org chart, the operational chart and other information for for council as we're continuing to work through that. Uh, in addition, uh, sticking to Public Works, um, as we received the final invoice for the outstanding item this past Friday afternoon, um, we'll this week have um the report and uh what I'm calling a report and audit regarding the Public Works campus. Um and again, this has been an ongoing effort for more than uh several months that finance um and our public work staff, along with our uh engineers from A W and our main um uh contractor, Rewald and Sons, has been uh going through along with some other contractors to help us gather and and basically complete an audit. So we'll have that report and audit here shortly. Um, and then finally, just wanted to note today, uh And then finally, just wanted to note today was the, I guess, the the end or the closing. We're still going to be processing our community surveys, but we did need to to close at some point the surveys. We've been still getting a few trickling in. I saw three that got into my mailbox today. But it's the much slower pace than the the hundreds that we were getting in previously. So I will follow up with our staff and in this upcoming Friday's managers' report, provide the total number that we have as of that point. And then our staff will start crunching through that data and then getting out a report to to staff and the council here shortly. That's all I had.
Very good. Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Manager Wang, just given the limited tenure of our last two DPW directors, I was just somewhat, not concerned, but just wanted to ask about the process. Who all's interviewing the candidates, et cetera?
Sure. Yeah. So for our first round, it actually was our Assistant Public Works Director, our Deputy Manager and myself. So the three of us, we did on Friday, basically forty-five minutes to an hour Zoom meetings with each of those candidates. Narrowed it down to now those two finalists. And in that group, it is the police chief, the fire chief, our Assistant Finance Director, so Marcy's in on it. And then Nick and myself, and this one will be for those two finalists in person. We're actually using our council chambers. And, you know, we'll have the air purifiers and masks and all that fun stuff. This one's a much more situational questions compared to just checking in. And they also have a written assignment that they'll be doing at the end of the interview process. They'll be doing some presentations and so those two candidates have been notified and we're setting that up for the end of this week.
Excellent. Thank you.
Well, you got to do homework assignments now to get a job, huh?
There's homework with some of these positions, yes.
It's getting tough out there. All right. Madam Clerk, anything?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor. Thank you.
City Attorney Clark?
Nothing. Thank you.
Okay, councilmember Bavacqua.
Yeah, I guess just a general comment. I like what I'm seeing in terms of the availability of vaccine for COVID-19 vaccine these days. Every time I turn around, I just hear of more and more people saying, oh, my God, I got my first one. I got my second one. So I'm very hopeful that, you know, things are going to return to some sense of normalcy in our downtown and for our businesses and and at our schools. And it's nice to see a bit of a light at the end of the tunnel, so.
We could all agree with that. Councilmember Harrison.
I'd just like to congratulate you, Mayor, on a job well done at the Community Outlook Breakfast. It was a great virtual event I was glad to be a part of, and I think our city was well represented.
Thank you. Councilmember Albrecht.
Nothing, nothing tonight.
Councilmember Peterson.
Um, nothing.
Councilmember Sage.
Nothing this evening, sir.
Wow, okay. I have a few quick things. First, again, just a reminder, we're having the SWOT meeting, so it's five forty-five next next meeting. Also, as you know, I think we heard from the the state senator's office, you know, it's really up in the air about our city council meetings. So Mr. City Manager and I are working diligently to, you know, figure out the best way and to communicate to you guys if we have to be back next month, you know, how we're how we're going to do it. And, you know, I think there's a decent chance we will all have to be back in person according to the law. So, you know, we're working on all kinds of mitigation strategies and ideas and things like that, but we will communicate that to everybody. But we are, we are working on that and planning on that. Also, next, at the next meeting, we will have a presentation of the DDA budget. The executive committee's meeting Wednesday and then the next week, the DDA board will have a meeting and that. So then I think DDA chairman and director will be here at the next meeting to discuss that. And I just want to say that I think the Community Outlook did did go well. It was, you know, a difficult thing to go from a breakfast to the online. It was technologically complicated. I just want to thank the the city manager and Natalie for for their work on that and helping, you know, plan for that and also do all the computer stuff because that was a quite, quite, quite a thing there. So and and I really hand it to the chamber. That was a hard ask to, you know, go from a five-hundred-person thing to a video, a virtual thing, but I think they did a pretty good job. And last, when I was driving home, I looked down from Dilman and Upton's on the trail and the trail was, had no more snow on it. Now, I'm not going to say it wasn't muddy, but I think that was a very good sign. So I think spring is here, or at least is hopefully here. So I don't think I'll see the police chief or anybody else riding their bikes out there any, you know, quickly, but I think we're on their way. So with anything else?
Mayor Pro Tem Salvia needs to.
Mayor Pro Tem Salvia, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I raised my hand, so. I just really wanted to echo your comments regarding the Community Outlook event. I thought you did an excellent job and administration supported you very well. You know, supporting our businesses. And in light of, you know, my technical challenges tonight, while I think masks masks and Plexiglas have their own challenges, I do look forward to meeting in person again and with all the safety protocols in place. And, you know, that'll be a new challenge for us to get used to. But I look forward to that as soon as we are ready to do that.
Right. Thank you. And I apologize for that. I will, I will throw technology under the bus that I go left to right. And then somehow your picture moved from bottom right to upper left. And so you got out of, so that's why.
No worries. I'm on my third backup. This is on my, this is on my cell phone. It's the only thing I can get to work on, so.
Well, now I have a built-in excuse for any, anything, any mistakes I make. It's the technology, right? So good night, everybody. Thank, thank you very much.
Sorry about that.
We'll see you guys next time. Thank you.
Bye.